I would like to call into session the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website that was posted. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. NCAT Educational Channel, Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance at members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The first item that we have on the agenda is election of officers. And I did send an email to all the members Friday, May 14th, and I had attached the policy, which is election of officers, of V240. As Chairman Pro Tem, I will take, it's now Southborough's turn this year to have the officers, and I have the pleasure of asking for nominations for Chair. As soon as we have the Chair, then that person will take over for the rest of the officers, which will be Vice Chair and Secretary. So at this time, do I have any motions for a Chair from Southborough?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kalenda.
So, and before I begin, I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, for the, you know, leading us through a pandemic, right? You know, the amount of work, the effort, the time that you put in. It goes directly to the benefit of our, both communities, to our, to our school, and, you know, really to our students. So, you know, thank you for your tireless effort, you know, this past year as being Chair.
Thank you, Dan, but I would like to just say that I think the thanks needs to go to everybody.
True. Well, this is your last meeting as Chair, so I wanted to just definitely point you out.
I think it was a collaborative effort by everybody, and we had, I mean, I don't think we ever had any hard times. I think we had some long meetings, but everything turned out to be positive. And I'd like to thank the administration, all the school committee members who are giving me this honor to do it. It's a pleasure to work with administrators, central office, teachers, everybody. It was a great effort. So, Dan Kalenda, did you have a motion?
I do. So, we're fortunate to have wonderful members in both communities, and, and in Southborough, outstanding members, some of whom have served as Chair before. There is one gentleman in particular that I would, who, who has the radio voice necessary to read that opening statement that you have to read every single time. And not only does he have the radio voice, but he's quite talented. He's, he's dedicated countless hours to, to this board, and I would be honored to nominate Mr. Paul Desmond to be the next Chair.
Second.
Okay, there was a second. Nominations do not require seconds, but we do have one. Paul, I'd just like to ask you before you go, would you like to accept this position?
How could I not after that gracious nomination?
I agree. Okay, are there any other nominations for Chair from Southborough? Seeing none, I'd like to close out the nominations for Chair. This will be a roll call vote. We do have a second, and that is to nominate Paul Desmond as Chair of the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee for the year 2021 to 2022. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Chris Covino.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
I'm going out of alphabetical order this time. Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and myself, yes, in affirmative. It is unanimous. Congratulations, Paul, and, and I know you're going to have a great year ahead, and thank you for your leadership. So, Paul, you and I'll take it over for doing the rest of the slate of officers.
All right, thanks, Joan. I was going to say much the same thing as Dan did about thanking you, Joan, but I don't think I can say it any better, so I'll just say, I'll add my thanks to his and everybody else's, so.
Thank you.
So at this point, we're going to elect the Vice Chair, and do we have any nominations? I'll make one. I would like to nominate Dan Kalenda as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers.
Sorry, yes, yep.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris Covino.
Yes.
Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so it's unanimous. Congratulations, Dan. And that brings us to Secretary. Do we have any nominations for Secretary? Well, I have one. I'd like to nominate Kathleen Politsko as Secretary.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, roll call vote. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris Covino.
Yes.
Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so it's once again unanimous. Congratulations, Kathleen. All right, I believe that leads us to executive session. So, I need a motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the Chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental, detrimental effect on the position of the committee with the intent to return to open meeting.
So moved.
I'll give it to Bucka by air and second by Dan Kalenda. Roll call vote. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so we are now moving to executive session.
And Paul, just in terms of process, so I did send a new link for executive session because I can't host two meetings at once. So Stephanie will remain on the webinar, and I will host the executive session meeting link, and then we'll return to the webinar. And again, as Stephanie mentioned, if you click the URL that was originally provided to you, you should jump right back into the meeting as a panelist. All right.
Okay.
So Greg, this is when we let anyone in the audience chime in, is that right?
Correct, I just have a brief presentation and then, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
On my screen. So again, as Mr. Desmond shared, this is the school choice public hearing as Wednesday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And this is information that I did share with the committee a few months ago. And I'll just present it again and then again, turn it back to Paul for any questions from the audience. And so the inter-school, inter-district school choice program under chapter seventy-six, paragraph twelve B, has been in place in the Commonwealth since nineteen ninety-one. And again, it allows, school choice allows the parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than the district in which the child lives. And school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and to admit non-resident students through school choice. Unless specifically they hold a public hearing and vote to opt out of school choice. Again, so districts can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on this issue and then votes to withdraw. And that is the purpose of this eve, of public hearing this evening. In terms of school choice tuition, the district would receive five thousand dollars per student. And the per pupil expenditure for the schools of Northborough, Southborough, or FY twenty was eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirteen cents. In terms of the flexibility within school choice, school committees may specify the schools and grades in which seats are available. Specific grades, programs, and schools, and in Algonquin's case, there's only one school. And then a non-discrimination policy applies to school choice in terms of non-discrimination. And in terms of school choice, if the number of applicants exceeds the number of available seats, the selection of students must be on a random basis or by lottery. It must take place before July one and then again before November first by school choice regulations. In terms of advantages and disadvantages, school choice is a potential source of revenue for school districts. It does allow districts flexibility in enrollment if enrollment declines. And again, school committees can make a year-to-year decision to opt out. However, once a school choice student is accepted, he or she will be a student for the remainder or duration of his career. So in, for example, a ninth grader would be allowed to remain at Algonquin Regional High School through his senior year graduation. The disadvantages is the amount of reimbursement we receive per pupil far, it's far less than our per pupil expenditure. Acceptance is by lottery, meaning that again, there is potential of receiving a student who costs far more than the five thousand dollars and far more than the per pupil expenditure of the district. Our surrounding, our sending communities, Northborough pre-K through eight and Southborough pre-K through eight, voted to opt out of school choice this year. So this actually should say the district, the student would remain through grade twelve. And again, there's a potential for a student to require significant resources. And then lastly, a concern about the fall twenty-one reopening, I think there's no need to add another variable in terms of school choice. In terms of what the fall may look like. And that concludes my overview and we'll turn it back over to Mr. Desmond.
Thanks Greg. All right. I only see four attendees who are not panelists and none of them have their hands raised, so I'll give a few seconds for if anyone attending wants to chime in on this topic. All right, it doesn't look like it, so I believe that closes the public hearing on school choice. And the agenda calls for audience sharing at this time, is that right, or was that the audience sharing?
I think no one raised their hands, I think we are good.
Okay. That brings us to action on minutes, we have two sets of minutes to, to deal with, the special open meeting minutes for April fifteenth and action on the open meeting minutes for April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
No move.
No move, I wasn't sure who that was.
Karen.
Probably by Karen Ayers, seconded by Paul Butka. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Butka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Keat? She's gone, never mind. Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polichko?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's nine, zero. Brings us to educational policy, none at this time, and new business, we have the auditor's report that's up for a vote. Greg, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, so we had our annual audit completed by Scanlon and Associates, certified public accountants. So we met with Tom Scanlon, the president, our assistant treasurer and treasurer were present as well as Becky Pellegrino. And I will have Becky share a few of the highlights.
Thank you Greg. So we were pleased to receive this audit report and I know Chris Tagg, the district treasurer, is also joining us tonight. We were pleased because the one management note that was made in the prior year's audit, we had corrected and that related to our grants and the spend down of an FY eighteen IDA grant. They also found that we had corrected another item that they had asked us to look into and that was pertaining to our cafeteria and our food service program. And we are continuing to work on that program in terms of doing monthly audits and also making sure that the liabilities are carried forward from year to year. The last point, and that is something that we did discuss, and that will be this summer, where we will be sending letters to all of the area banks asking them to confirm that no bank accounts have been opened under the district's federal tax identification number. So that would be the last piece of this audit, but overall, it was a, a smooth process, it was a little different this year, doing it remote, some remote and some in person, but Scanlon's, Tom Scanlon's group is a great group to work with and always asks great questions and is always keeping us in the know on things that are coming down the pike. Chris, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to say that Tom was very complimentary of the finance team and even referred to utilizing some of our initiatives that Becky's put in place to other communities. And again, I think the fact that the management letter is very limited as far as comments or concerns also suggests a great job by the finance team.
All right, thank you. I agree, it was, it was pretty much a glowing report. Paul Butka, you got a comment or question? Paul Butka?
Uh, yeah, so I was at the meeting with, with Tom and I would echo some of what Christine just said in terms of how complimentary he was for, for our team and our methodologies and procedures and processes and it was, uh, you know, I mean, I've sat through a lot of audits over the course of my life for different functions and different organizations and I don't think I've ever participated in one where the, the auditor was so complimentary and had, I mean, you know, they're paid to find stuff, it's, you know, on some level, I mean, you don't need them if they can't, if you're doing it so perfectly that, that they can't find anything, he found nothing. I mean, he was, it was, it was as clean as, as it could possibly be and that, that really, that says a lot to Becky and her team there, I think. So, yeah, I, I echo that.
Thank you, well said. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we do need to vote on this, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the audit presented by Tom Scanlon, President of Scanlon and Associates CPAs for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Let's move that.
I'll second that.
Moved by Paul Butka, seconded by Chris Covino. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Butka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Don't believe Kathy Keat is back yet, so Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polichko?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, it passes unanimously. Congratulations. Uh, the next item is letter of recognition. Joan, I think this was to you, is that right?
Yes, it is. And with the permission of the chair, Paul Desmond, may I read this into record?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. At different times, all of us have been awarded with different things and honors and and when this one came to my attention of a school committee member who's present tonight and who serves on the committee, I decided that I thought it was very appropriate to write a letter of recognition. And this one is going out to Dan Kalenda. Dear Dan, on behalf of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, I would like to congratulate and commend you for your promotion to the position of Colonel in the United States Army on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Was certainly a day of honor for you and your entire family when this high position was awarded to you at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, where you are commander of the twelfth Legal Operations Detachment. The committee is so proud of the Kalenda family, knowing that your father was a Colonel in the Army Reserve JAG Corps and that your brother was in the Army Reserve and retired as a Colonel after serving four tours in Afghanistan. Your law degree and your expertise in the legal field serves our country to the fullest. Through your position, you lead a unit of fifty soldiers along with a full-time staff who serve as military attorneys and paralegals. This unit provides trained and ready soldiers who can provide legal services to the Army Reserve and active Army anywhere at any time. The regional committee also commends you for your twenty-two years of commissioned service with the United States Army and specifically your military commitment in Baghdad, Iraq from two thousand and eight to two thousand and nine, performing a rule-of-law function with the Fifteenth Airborne Corps and receiving the Bronze Star. In conclusion, thank you, Dan, for your service to our country and at the same time, in your elected position as a valued Southborough member of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee since September two thousand and nine. Sincerely, Joan Frank, Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee. And Dan, I will send a hard copy of that letter to you in the mail tomorrow. So thank you very much, Dan, for your service to our country, it's greatly appreciated from all of us.
Thank you Joan, I, that was very touching, very moving, I, I
Thank you, Joan. That was very touching, very moving. I did not know you were going to do that. Thank you for that. And as you, as you mentioned, it is a family affair. Anytime someone serves and puts on the uniform, especially when they're called to to go overseas, which I had to do when my kids were in the Southborough school system. And I will share the, you know, the schools that were nothing but supportive of me when I was gone. They continue to be supportive of our, of our military members deployed overseas through care package drives, through candy drives that, and I was the recipient of some of those from those wonderful kids who would have some extra Halloween candy and, and would send us barrels full. So that was incredibly kind. I'm humbled to, to receive that promotion. I actually wear my father's dress blue uniform. You said you did some great research there. He was in the Army Reserve JAG Corps for thirty years and I was proud to have my beautiful wife Kathy there and my dad, you know, to help me celebrate. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you for your service to our country, Dan. Thank you.
Thanks Joan, and thank you, Dan. That brings us to legislative update. Greg, you want to take this?
Sure, I have two updates this evening. The first is, I have to say, the school committee did break a record for the best gas mileage traveling to the Day on the Hill in the committee's history. The Day on the Hill session was virtual this year. And again, it's always a great opportunity to meet with our legislative delegation and hear what initiatives are, but more importantly, to share what our priorities as a school committee are. So I'm hoping that as we look ahead to the Day on the Hill and the winter of twenty twenty-two, it will be in person. We can actually go and shake hands with our legislative delegation. The other legislative update I have is the Senate Ways and Means released its FY twenty-two budget. That is the budget, the budget that we use to create our FY twenty-two regional budget was the governor's budget. And what we're seeing is an increase from the governor's budget and regional transportation, circuit breaker and a small increase in chapter seventy. So in terms of where we are, I think we are in a good position in terms of the baseline we use to build our regional budget. So all good news in terms of the budgetary front. And that concludes my legislative update.
All right, thank you Greg. Any questions, comments on that? I guess we'll move on to the COVID nineteen update.
So no shortage of changes with COVID nineteen updates from the state and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And Mary Ellen will speak a little bit about our screening program and also some of the changes that we're seeing move forward.
So the screening program is going well. We're seeing a steady increase, continue to see that about a two percent increase every week since the beginning. That's what we're seeing. We are, they had a vaccine clinic. The regional site had a vaccine clinic for our high school students a couple of Saturdays ago, and now they are doing after-school hours this last week and this week for our students. So we're hoping that that will increase our vaccine rate for those who are looking for a vaccine. New updates, the mask guidelines, as you all know, on April thirtieth, the mask restrictions were lifted a little bit and you could, you still needed a mask indoors for the, by state guidelines. And if you're outdoors and greater than six feet apart, social distance, you did not need a mask. Monday, the announcement was made by the governor that beginning May twenty-ninth, the mask mandate will be lifted and a mask advisory will take its place. So with that, what will happen when that happens is that masks will still be required in certain areas and that would be public transportation, healthcare. Some mask restrictions at school, our medical advisory that was effective, they came out with it Monday afternoon to be in effect on Tuesday. So our medical advisory team met on Tuesday and we under their recommendations for the high school, we there were aligning with, the masks are required in school, masks are required on the bus. Masks are not required if you're outdoors and greater than six feet apart, which aligns with our state guidelines right now. And aligns with CDC also, who they, CDC's recommendations for K to twelve schools are that we continue with the prevention measures that we have in place, prioritizing universal and correct wearing of masks and physical distancing. So with that in mind and the track record we've had of being a little bit more conservative than what the Department of Education has recommended throughout the year, we've always erred on the side of caution with the health and safety of our students and our staff as our top priority. So we are continuing to be conservative and we will update weekly as we see the data come in. And that is the update for.
So Mary Ellen, can I just add a couple of comments? So I think, so mask wearing for athletes has been removed. Also, outdoor, outdoor physical education, any outdoor activity, mask mandate has been removed. Also, our cleaning protocols, we're able to reduce it to one deep daily cleaning a day, which is a significant change for us. I've welcomed. And then the other, the last change, Mary Ellen, we had three changes. It was deep cleaning, masks outside, and there was a third, I'm drawing a blank on.
There were a few. There was the use of air conditioning was one of them, the masks and
Oh, maybe just two.
Sharing, sharing materials?
Yes.
Sharing of materials, yes. So items can be shared now without disinfecting in between.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of questions, starting with Dan.
Hey Mary Ellen, are you doing anything different than what, and I've got a few questions if I may, but they all, they're, so are you doing anything different? Are you directing anything different than what the state is already, I mean, do you have different data? Do you have different, you know, inputs than what the state has already done? And if so, can you share those with us? Can you tell us where your data may differ from the state's data? And where your data may differ from maybe some surrounding communities? So that's my first question.
I think our data doesn't differ. What we do is we monitor the data as the medical advisory team. I think we're following our state guidelines right now from the Department of Public Health. What we are being more conservative on is the DESI recommendations that came out on Monday.
So and can you tell the community, can you tell us and everyone listening, why are you being more conservative than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I believe that we're not more conservative than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The mask order is still in effect until May twenty-ninth. And that order that's in effect presently is that masks are required indoors and if you, outdoors, if you cannot maintain six feet, then masks are required. So by the state guidelines, we are not. By Department of Education recommendations, we are being a little bit more conservative and we have been more conservative throughout the whole year with, and we, I mean, our track record has shown that our erring on the side of caution and being more conservative has benefited our students and our staff.
So we don't actually know that for a fact, is my guess. I mean, unless you have the data that can say that the transmission among students is, it should be the same at a higher, I, my understanding is, and you're more expert than I in this area, that it's actually lower in lower-aged people than it is adults. So again, I guess, I think it would, it would benefit all of us here in our communities if you could provide the actual data, the science that backs up being more conservative than what the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is doing.
We have had no student-to-student or student-to-staff or staff-to-staff, staff-to-student transmission in the high school since we've come back to school.
Mary Ellen, can I just, can I?
So I guess the point is then why is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts not doing exactly what, what you're requesting? You know, it, I don't, I don't know if this is a zero sum, you know, if you're looking for zero, you know, in, in anything, you know, COVID-related. It, it, maybe again, you can share whether or not this is a, an issue that is where students of younger age are more susceptible, they're more likely to spread it, they're more likely to, to come down with it, they're more likely to have significant issues if they do come down with it. Is any of that factually true or is that actually the opposite of what the data shows with, with school-aged children?
And through the chair, if I can just kind of respond, I just want to make it clear that at the high school level, we are following DESI's recommendations. We are in alignment with what they are recommending. So there is no place to be less restrictive in terms of mask wearing. You know, as Mary Ellen stated, the state of Massachusetts and Governor Baker's orders do not necessarily pertain to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And at this time, adults and students must continue to wear masks indoors. But the high school level, you know, masks outdoors are not required.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, Greg. I may have been, I may have keyed in on what Mary Ellen was saying about she's being more conservative. And, and I wasn't sure exactly what, if there's nothing actually in the high school, which is obviously, this is a regional school committee meeting. Maybe she meant other, you know, you know, the elementary schools. I don't know where, where there's more restrictive measures being retained than what the Commonwealth is asking. But if I understand you correctly, that that the, the, the high school is following the guidance that is exactly put forward by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is that correct?
Yes, Mary Ellen.
I, I think I am going to say that our guidelines that we put forth yesterday that masks are required outdoors if distance is not able to be maintained during the school day.
All right, thank you. I just, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to have that clarification. There was, I, I've actually had a lot of parents reach out to me. There's, there's still confusion out there as to, you know, what, what are we actually following? Are we following the Commonwealth's guidance? Are we following? You know, is there regional guidance? Is there this, this entity that Greg just mentioned? They have their own ability to set guidance. And then, you know, I think it'd be helpful for all of us if somebody, and I haven't seen it yet, if somebody, and I guess Mary Ellen, you're the expert, if you could pinpoint for us the science, and I know you just, you, you, you say, well, it's, you know, we've had zero cases. That's awesome. And that's actually, that's, that's perfect. That's not to say we wouldn't have had zero cases. You know, anyway, right? And I'm not saying no mask, I'm saying following the Commonwealth guidance and and, and I, and I guess my final question is, do we as a district, you know, if, and Greg, what's the name of that entity you mentioned again? I'm sorry, I think.
It's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Okay. So are they the entity that has the power and authority to direct us to do whatever they say, which may be at any point in time more conservative than what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is saying? Or can we make that decision collectively on our own?
No, that's driven by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you, Greg.
Can I just, can I just make a couple of comments too? So I think we as a district are committed to returning to normal. I think we have tried to follow a process throughout the school year. And we are very fortunate to have a medical advisory team who, you know, as you know, is made up of medical doctors, epidemiologists. It's very challenging for us when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education releases information on day one and expects us to implement day two without having any time to communicate our process. So I think, you know, our process has, has been true. We've been slow and measured. That is to seek advice from our medical experts to take that advice and make informed decisions. And that is what we, we've done all year long. And I think, you know, I think we've had, had success to this point.
All right, thanks Greg. Paul Butka?
Thanks, Paul. Mary Ellen, I'm just curious, you know, I'm always the stat guy. Do we have any, any data on how many students at the, at the high school have been vaccinated, either with one shot or both?
We do not have that data. We're, we're, we just, people have sent it in, but we are not requiring it. So we don't have the, any numbers.
You know how many shots we've given out on, on the property?
We haven't done any clinics on the property.
I thought we did, okay.
No, we did them at the regional center. We opened it up to this, just the high school students at the regional center.
All right, well, that's the bad. I saw something the other day that talked about ninety-one percent of the people in South, no, ninety-one percent of the adults in Southborough received at least one dose. I was thrilled with the penetration, frankly, and was kind of wondering.
I know that both Northborough and Southborough are very high in their rates of vaccination. So they're some of the highest in the state. I do know that.
All right, thanks.
Sean O'Shea?
I guess Greg and Sean, or probably you don't have any, or and Mary Ellen, probably have any specifics at this time, but does, because I think graduation and end of the year's guidance came out today. Does any of this change in, 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 end of the year type of activities?
Yes, firstly, yes. And I'm going to be providing an update. I can do that now, but it looks like we will have some ability to have mask wearing not required for attendees at outdoor graduation with social distancing encouraged and encouraging people who are not vaccinated to wear masks. So they are reducing the, the requirements and placing those by encouragements, which allows us to do some, some planning without having to ensure with great specificity that families are, let's say, six feet apart, which is, was becoming a real challenge to do. We were ready to take on that challenge, but it appears we will be able to relax that, which I think will enhance the event for parents and students.
I'll just say, I, I feel for you being a couple of weeks out from all of that and the guidance changing so quickly.
So I could say, Sean, that was just from my notes from the webinar that, that Commissioner Riley had today, but they have not published official changes to the commencement guidelines. So they had guidelines on March twenty-second, they adjusted to April twenty-eighth, and now they're adjusting them now. And we're just like taking note and waiting for the official word on what that, those guidelines will change. They're certainly relaxing in a way that will mean it'll be a more enjoyable experience for our students and for our families, which we're excited about.
Yeah, and I would just say, I greatly appreciate the district's approach all year about taking it slow and measured and thoughtful and, and not just reacting and for the benefit of not just the students, but the staff and the community. So I think the, your, your process and methods have been you know, commendable. As, as pointed out, when the, going to the, that national webinar that you were a part of. So thank you for all, all of those that you've done this year.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised, except I think Sean's, there goes. So I guess we can move on. Thank you, Mary Ellen, and your team for, for that report. And that brings us to plans to return to in-person learning in September or late August, I guess.
Sure. So just a, just a brief update on what we're hearing from the commissioner about what we can plan on September looking like. Although I would argue that it is far too early to speculate around September. We do think that we will be back in person to start the school year, that there'll be some lifting of restrictions in terms of social distancing in classrooms. So the commissioner signaled today that his request will be to remove the social distancing requirement with the exception of during lunch. He also did signal too that he does not anticipate. He also did signal too, that he does not anticipate, um, the mask restriction being lifted, um, prior to the end of these, of this year for indoors. And, um, he signaled that he anticipates that mask wearing could be, um, here in the fall as well for indoor academics. Again, it's far too early to kind of signal what the fall will look like, um, but I can assure you that we all hope that it looks far more normal than it, uh, it did, uh, this past September. We will keep you updated, um, as information released, um, the commissioner did, did share in the past, the conversation that, he doesn't anticipate to release any guidance really until, um, mid to late July, again, just giving enough time so he can make informed decisions.
Okay, thank you, uh, I see Dan Kalenda has a question or a comment, Dan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so Greg, does that, do you know, did they give any guidance about, you know, students that actually receive and are fully vaccinated at that point? You know, are students that are fully vaccinated still going to be expected to, to wear masks?
Yeah, those are the types of details we're waiting to hear, Dan, um, at this point in time, I think, I don't think they're at that detailed level yet. They do have, I do, they believe they work with a governor's medical advisory team, Desi has its own advisory team, and, we expect the new guidelines will outline specifics for us such as, such as that.
Thank you Greg, I know businesses are grappling with it as well, and, and, you know, there are individuals who won't get vaccinated for particular reasons. Um, and they may be required to continue to wear masks, um, you know, but for those that are fully vaccinated, I know that there's the, there's a movement to, that everyone is, is, has grown tired of the mask, and the reason for getting vaccinated is to, it be able to, you know, get back to life as normal, so hopefully that, you know, the, the group you're working with, uh, takes all of that into consideration, when they're, uh, putting these policies in place for our children, um, for the fall.
I had a question too, uh, you know, this year we, I believe, required a flu shot for students, right? And where did that, did that come from the state, or was that our own idea, or where did that come from?
It's Mary Ellen.
That was a state requirement that got lifted.
Okay.
So they did, they were requiring it, I believe in the fall, they said everybody had to have it before the first of the year, and then, um, as they noted, the flu season to be minimal, uh, because of all the mitigation strategies we've been using, they lifted that requirement.
So it wouldn't be out of the question?
It was not mandatory, it was from the Department of Public Health, it was not mandatory after, as of January.
Okay, but it wouldn't be out of the question for the state to require a COVID vaccination?
I, I would believe it would need to be approved and not under emergency use before that would ever happen.
What does that mean exactly?
The, it's under an emergency use right now, the vaccine is given under emergency use, so it would need to be appro, really approved through all of those, the steps that it has to get proved through before it would ever be mandated.
I think once the FDA gives its, uh, final stamp of approval, um, that is when it would be, uh, talked about at the state level, but I think that, you know, just listening to some of the conversations at, at the, the state and the governor's level, it does not sound like the signals, um, will require mandate vaccines. I know some districts in the area have already stated their, um, their interest in, in mandating vaccines as a local town. And at this point in time, I'm not, um, and I think that's a, a much larger conversation to have, and many more discussions with the school committee and, and the boards of health and, um, the public officials.
Okay, thank you. Don't see any other hands raised on this topic, so why don't we move along to the school choice vote? Where we, I guess the idea is we have to vote to opt out of school choice, correct?
Yeah, and again, my recommendation is to, um, for the committee to opt out of school choice for the twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, for the reasons I stated in the presentation. And also, Principal Bevan and I have had conversations around, um, you know, our capacity to try a new program out next year, and we both agree that, uh, the timing is not right, nor do we need, um, the revenue at this point in time to, to balance our budget.
Okay. I will entertain a vote from the committee that we vote to opt out of school choice for the coming school year.
I'll move that we opt out of school choice for this coming year.
Second.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Karen Ayers, any discussion, Paul Bucka?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, um. You, you know, Greg, I, I mean, I agree with you, it, they give us five grand, you know, we, we do the math against our budget and we spend eighteen, but, you know, I, I think it's a little disingenuous, I mean, if we, if we accepted two or three or four kids, we wouldn't be changing our budget in any material way unless we had the, the bad luck of, of randomly selecting a kid that, like, that generated, significant bills for us, but if they were the vast majority, the, the norm, the normal student, and we were just able to slip them into a classroom here or a classroom there, be they freshmen or sophomores or juniors or, or whatever. You know, we wouldn't be hiring more teachers, we wouldn't need more aides, we wouldn't need more custodians, we wouldn't need a bigger building, and we would pick up, five grand per kid, it, it's, I mean, I, I think maybe the timing's not perfect this year, but one of these years, this is a bridge we need to, think harder about crossing, and would be, would be my comment to the committee as a whole. And then the, the other question I have is, isn't there some, um, some sort of sibling rule that's associated with this? So if a, if a freshman and a junior set of brothers or sisters opted in and we selected one, if we randomly picked, the junior, do we not, aren't we almost required to take the freshman?
If we, if we are, if we have seats available in that grade level, um, for, you know, that, uh, additional sibling, yes.
So that could change, uh, so even if we voted to accept four, for example, we could end up with five or six?
We, we wouldn't be required, if we had, you know, if we were very specific around the seats that we had available, and we said we have two seats in, you know, grade nine, three seats in grade ten. If, um, you know, one of the siblings was a grade eleven, a twelve student, we would not have to accept that student.
Alright, I thought there was, I thought there was some regulations around that, okay. But, I don't know, you know, I do think, one, one of these years, it's, you know, on some level, if the kids that, come in and we select them randomly are kind of the standard, it's, it's a little bit free money, and we're, that we're walking away from. You know, I will vote to opt out this year because I think it's, you know, probably going into a potential variant COVID environment, the last thing we need is, is any sort of administrivia to burden you guys in any way whatsoever going into next year, but, but it, it is, it is a thought, that we should not lose sight of. Thanks.
Thanks Paul, Chris Covino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I guess I would just say that, um, I'm speaking very anecdotally here, related to my own school choice experiences, uh, in the district I work in, and I agree with Paul, uh, that in an ideal world, you would get a standard distribution of students. It's generally speaking, my experience has been that, um, that distribution isn't particularly random, usually there are reasons why, uh, individuals are trying to leave the school district that they're, uh, the sending district, I guess is what you'd call it. And, um, without getting into too many details, I can say that, um, I agree, the, the money is, is good, and the school district I work for, um, has used school choice funds to fund positions. But as the population of the school has increased from individuals, you know, from within the towns that I work for, um, that has reduced the number of school choice seats, and so there becomes a, basically a structural deficit based on school choice funds, which, uh, becomes difficult to overcome, uh, without significant budget increases to the local communities. So, um, relying on school choice money, um, I think is, would be even a long-term mistake. And, um, in an ideal world, we would get a, what we would consider to be a standard distribution of students, however, um, my experience has been that that is not necessarily the case, I'm just throwing that out there as a general comment. Um, in principle, it's a great idea, um, I for one would opt out based on, um, my historical experiences with school choice, thank you.
Thanks Chris, Sean O'Shea.
I would agree with Chris, and, um, if we were to, um, entertain this in the future time, I think if, it would be helpful to specify where those funds go, because you can become in that kind of a structural deficit, it becomes folded into the operating budget, and if you were ever to, decrease the number of students and then, or, or cut it off, all of a sudden you have a, a large deficit in funding, uh, so it kind of becomes this, hamster wheel thing, so if we were to get, consider it in the future, I think, then we would want to consider that funds to go specifically to something, potentially like the O-PED or, or something that, um, something that is tangible but not fully part of the operational budget, and I don't even know if that's possible, but, it can, um, it, it can create quite a, a, a difficulty if you ever try to, um, stop it or the numbers aren't there.
Okay, uh, Dan Kalenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as, as, as Mr. Book can knows, he continues to move me towards his position every year. Um, I was inquisitive to, to hear as to whether or not he would want, uh, to vote for school choice this year. Uh, it, you know, I, I think choice among, uh, uh, you know, parents, among students throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country, uh, you know, there's, there's, a continued push to have, you know, kids would love to come to this high school for very good reasons, and, and I guess my, my only question, Greg, is, is are there, uh, and I may have missed this, my apologies if I did, but can we accept one, can we accept two? Is there a minimum that we have to accept in order to be, be part of the program?
Correct, you can, you have a, a lot of, um, say, in terms of the, the number of seats, the grade level, so you have maximum flexibility, you could accept one student.
To, to that end, if we were to say, we, we will be a school choice school, a school choice district, and we're going to do that, um, and we're going to start out slow, we're going to start out with one. Is that feasible?
Y- yes, you could identify the grade level and the number of seats you have.
So I'm inquisitive, I know Mr. Book has his hand raised, thank you.
Uh, yep, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, so to, just to answer Dan's question, you know, I think Dan, this year, in particular because we've lost some of the other, outside funding for out of district kids that have come into the, into the system, uh, you know, as a result of the, the virus or, or whatever. This year might have been a year where I would have voted that we opt into school choice and pick up, you know, to your point, maybe, you know, two juniors and two freshmen, or something like that, and just see, you know, what, you know, what we can do with them and, and how it all works. But, uh, you know, one of the, one of, one of, uh, Greg's comments about just, you know, we don't know, we don't know what September's going to bring here, and, and how complicated, the world may still be, and to just, for, you know, for, to pick up twenty grand and all of a sudden take on the, administration of the random selecting of, of students and, you know, kind of figuring all that out, and what we do with the money, and how we collect the money, and, what processes does Becky have to put in place to get the money, and it, it's, it's probably, I, I think I'm kind of convinced that this isn't the year to try it, but, but we do have a decreasing student population, uh, you know, and, and it is one of those things where, you know, it might not be a bad way to make up for that loss of population at some point in time in the future. And, and for, you know, some of the other members on the committee that are going to be around longer, you know, I just, I want to, just kind of keep, keep mentioning this every single time it comes up, so, because one of these years, you're going to want to pull the trigger on it.
Thanks Paul, Karen.
Um, thank you, I just wanted to get a clarification for the committee members, um, Greg, just to clarify. Because this is my understanding as well, because I have also had the experience of, um, working in a district that did have school choice and was reliant on it, um, which was a very slippery slope, um, so, if you open up the, you know, say five slots in tenth grade, if you get four applicants, you have to take those four, you don't have a choice, so if you have ten applicants, then you take, then you have a lottery, right, is that, so it is kind of, it is a gamble.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that for the members as well, that's all.
Thanks Karen, it's a good point, yeah, to me, that five thousand number would have to be higher, because I'd love to know when the last time it changed what was, I'll, I'll be willing to bet it's fifteen or twenty years, but, so, to me, for that, I just don't know if it's worth it, and, you know, then you, you're getting into a position where, you know, we, we already have kids competing for electives every year, and, you know, they don't always get the ones they want, now you're competing with these kids from outside the district, um, I don't know, I'm just not sure it's worth it, but. I don't see any other hands raised, so I think we're ready to, uh, to vote, uh, the motion on the table is that we opt out of school choice, so a yes vote means you're voting to opt out, so just to be clear on that. Uh, roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Don't see Kathy Key back yet, so Daniel Kalenda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathleen Pulitzko?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so it passes unanimously. I'll bring us to the next item, uh, tiered focused monitoring. Greg, you want to tee this up?
Sure, so actually, I believe, uh, Marie provided an update on, um, the monitoring program, uh, a few school committee meetings ago, she did remind me that she did give, an update already, so I'm not sure if anyone wants a, a new update, um, it, it's an annual update, so nothing would change from the last update that she gave.
Well, there's plenty on the agenda here, so we have to deal with that, but then, sorry Marie, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to the mascot renaming update.
So, uh, Principal Bevan and Mike Moserino and I, and I have had a couple of, um, fact finding meetings, um, to really think about, you know, what does this process look like in terms of, kind of rebranding Algonquin Regional High School, um, so we met with two organizations who do, uh, pro bono work, um, for school, school districts around the country who are changing, um, their symbols and their mascots, so we met with Hertz Strategy and Varsity Brands, and I'll, I'll let Sean speak in a little more detail about, um, you know, some of the things we discovered.
Sure, yeah, thank you Greg, and Greg, to let you know, I, I found a third, uh, a third option possible, uh, that I, I'm going to be exploring, uh, as soon as tomorrow, so, we're excited to undertake the, the, what feels like a great opportunity to, to, rebrand our school in, in a way that will unify our, our kids and community, so, um, there are people who've done this and have gone through the, the kind of fact, the, the, um, the, the stage of, of interviewing members of the community, find polling members of the community, figuring out what, what you're looking for, that will reflect the values of that, of the community, and develop a process before you get into the, into the, um, the actual development of a logo or mascot, so, we're learning from these outfits that have done this before, what works in communities like ours, and we're excited to begin that work, and that will be, we'll start to develop a group of stakeholders to, to begin that work, and hear from the people who have the, the rich, uh, experience in this process. And then I, uh, we're excited to bring the kids into the, the process of, uh, identifying logo ideas, that mascot ideas, um, and then, and then bringing, bringing that to this group to help you understand what, what that process has looked like, and what the selection, options will be, so, I'm really excited about it, that people who do this work are, 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 produce incredibly quali, quality work, so the idea of having their logos, adorning all of our, materials and our, our uniforms someday is, is really exciting, so, um, that is, uh, something that Greg and Mike and I have begun to do, and I think probably Greg, uh, by the end of the day Friday, I might have this third one sorted out, and so I think by that time, we'll be able to choose, from three outfits that I think I'll, I'll be, um, able to do high quality pro bono work for, uh, us and our community.
And Sean, I'll just add that, um, uh, Paul, you do not realize this yet, but, and next Wednesday, we're hoping to, um, hold a meeting with you and, uh, that outgoing chair and have a transition meeting. And as part of that transition meeting, really outline a process for this work to take place in a timeline. So we're hoping to present that to the committee in June, similar to any study group in terms of the membership, timing, charge and purpose. So, you know, Paul, we will be sending you an invite for next week.
Very good. I'll look out for that. Dan, you have a question or comment?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that, Mr. Bevan. So and I do think it it's going to be incredibly important. You mentioned in your presentation there that you were going to be polling and that others have polled the communities. Did I hear that correctly?
That would be, to my understanding, there are there are steps in this where you'd be gathering information from kids on what, you know, what mascot options they would be excited to see. Yeah.
All right. So I I do think that is going to be an incredibly important part of your job. I I don't know about others on the committee, but I have received numerous emails and phone calls from community members saying they wish they had been polled prior to the vote that was taken at the last meeting. And so I I think it's going to be incredible. You 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 mentioned that you you were looking to to whatever the mascot is going to be, that is going to unify the communities. And that is an incredibly tall order, because I think right now, I mean, it maybe I'm the only one seeing the traffic, but it's been a polarizing, it's been a, it's been a divisive issue. And I mean, I'm 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 excited to hear what you are going to come up with for a mascot that everyone is going to be, is going to rally around. That's a tall order, but I'm confident you can do it. And, you know, in in if you actually do poll the communities, I know Southborough has the ability to poll its residents. I know Algonquin has the ability to poll its community. I'm I'm confident that Northborough can poll its residents. That, you know, I I don't want to see what happened with the last vote and the some of the aftermath that I have seen happen when you are trying, you know, to your credit, to come up with something that that to use your words, will unify this community that's that's unfortunately been divided by this particular issue. So. Thank you.
Yep. You know, I just want to comment there. I mean, Sean, I don't think you could have done a better job communicating what that mascot study group was doing. So the fact that some people didn't find out until last minute, I mean, to me is your own fault, and it happens every single time with these things. So that's my thought on that.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond.
I don't see any other hands raised, so I believe that brings us to the next topic, which is the student handbook.
Sure, I'll turn it over to Mr. Besman, to Mr. Bevan, not Mr. Desmond, for the next to the student handbook and the program studies.
Yeah, so actually, I'll hand it off to Mr. McGowan, who's our assistant principal, who's, this has been a project he's been working on, and he's happy to to fill you in on changes to the handbook, which I don't think are entirely all that substantive, but he's worked hard on making sure it's a quality handbook. Andy.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So, yeah, like Sean said, there's not too many significant changes in terms of overhauls or anything like that, but just to fill you in on some of the changes that did take place, given the recent vote on the mascot change, the tomahawk dedication, which was at the beginning of the year, handbook was removed, the bell schedule, we've been through a few of them this year, and that was taken out of the handbook, and that was now just made as a link to or a reference to our website. So that people can get the most up to date one. Um, in our health section of the handbook, we added some items about the COVID, such as staff self-monitoring, things like that, and just kind of screenings, that kind of thing. We updated a lot of it, a lot of the updates this year were really just formatting dates, names, adding the change of start time, making that so that it's 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 current for next year. Our district updated some policy numbers, so that was realigned with our district policy numbers. And we took the bullying section of the handbook, which was previously in the back of it, and moved it up to the the front under guidelines for student behavior. So those were, those were the changings, those were the kind of more prevalent changes this year. Next year, we plan to go through and have a formal handbook committee to go through and do a deep dive into it.
Thank you, Andy. I I can go into the program of studies, but it might be a good idea if there are questions about the handbook changes in particular, that might be a good chance to answer those now.
Okay, Kathleen Holland.
Yes, thank you. As I was looking through the handbook, I saw that there was really no notes about stress management or wellness, and it would seem like a really good place to put that, to put in what the resources are, what available in this school, ways to manage your schedule, ways to support executive functions, et cetera. It 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 would seem like a great way for a freshman to come into Algonquin and be prepared. I I think it's time to start being more explicit about that work. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Kathleen. That's something I'll bring to our committee next year when we go into it. And we do have in the handbook hotline numbers for high school students that kind of outline some various outside organizations that they can tap into as resources. But I think your no unstress management is is an important thing that we can look at, yeah.
And I think in that regard, that what I'm suggesting, more things related to prevention than it being in an acute crisis. And I'd be happy to support any of that work in any way that I could, Mr. McGowan. Please feel free to call on me. But Mary Ellen and her staff are exceptional with this. I just know that they're stretched thin, and I'm on sabbatical.
All right, Paul Bucka.
Thanks, Paul. So just just one one question that that's come up a few different times with this whole mascot change. You know, in terms of appropriate clothing at school, several people have have from the public has suggested to us in various ways that since we've outlawed the tomahawk because people find it offensive, that we are now backed into a corner where we need to outlaw clothing with tomahawks on it because of the same rationale. Can we take a kind of a public response to that here right now?
Sorry, Mr. Buck, are you asking me that question or are you asking the committee?
Well, no, I'm asking, is the handbook address it? Is the handbook silent on it? How does the handbook deal with that observation, I guess, that we've heard from several folks?
Yes, I can respond to that. We have a, what I consider a pretty lengthy dress code that probably could be reduced and to be a little bit more broad, be broadened. I'm not entirely sure that that how specific and restrictive our dress code is on paper. I I don't think that that's exactly the lived experience in the building, so we want to make sure that our handbook is reflecting what is it being enforced here in in our school. Also, I'm not entirely sure that our handbook policy would really stand up to a close scrutiny of of student students' rights for being able to express themselves. So I think I don't see anything going into our handbook. I certainly wouldn't support something that would would prevent tomahawk imagery being on students' clothing. It's been on our clothing in our building for 60 years. And as much as we have taken a close analysis of this and concluded that it's not going to be the endorsed mascot of our community, it doesn't mean that people who buy their own apparel and wear their own clothes would be forced to do something different because of that conclusion. That's just my own feeling.
Thank you.
All right, Sean O'Shea.
In terms of the review committee next year, one thing that came out of the mascot review committee was the the importance of continued education. And I think it would be a nice piece somewhere in the beginning of the book if there was an educational component about why the school is named Algonquin Regional. And we kind of, I think it would be a founding piece, at least to start that educational component.
That's a great idea.
Okay, I believe that's all the comments on that. So, Mr. Bevan, if you want to move on to the program of studies, that'd be great.
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mr. McGowan, for that update on the handbook. We don't have any massive changes on the program of studies, but as we do most years, we have a few new courses that are worth referencing, but nothing earth shattering or or, you know, really changing the landscape of the building. We, one of the things that is really remarkable about Algonquin is our electives offerings. And I sometimes you're so close to a school, you might not be aware of how unique the strengths of that school are. And I can tell you, having been out of this building for 10 years, coming back to it, it was really notable to me that the kinds of electives offerings we we offered to kids are pretty pretty remarkable and a real a real feature of our school community. So we have just a few I'll report in on our in our phys ed department, we're offering weight training and conditioning, which is a course we've offered in the past but have not run in several years. But this year, we're we're re-adding that. So that's exactly what it sounds like, but it's certainly one that a subset of our kids, of our students, will will respond really well to. In mathematics, we have a two courses that are single semester courses that are really kind of a real world math for students for whom more abstract math might 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 not be as appealing. So we are offering contemporary applied mathematics as a first semester course that focuses on how to make data informed decisions and how to use data to your advantage. And then that same course or the same title for a second semester, it really focuses on the the applications of mathematics in the real world. So you might recall Beth Doerr, who's our math department head, had described these as course offerings. They were in development, and those are going into the program of studies, which are exciting. Additionally, and I'll talk more about this in a moment, we, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. And I think, Ms. Holland, you'll enjoy this. We are looking to expand the offerings we have in the fine and performing arts and to have those offerings appeal to students who aren't necessarily performing artists, so that there is a greater breadth of of appeal for those courses. So we're offering one called Learn to Jam, and that's one where it's open to students of all grades and of any musical experience, where students can go from zero musical experience and and gain the ability to play one of several instruments or several instruments and learn how to do kind of the basics of learning music. And so that's one that we're excited to offer. And then we're also offering a course called American Pop Music from Billie Holiday to Billie Eilish, and that's exactly what it sounds like. It's a course where we're examining American pop music, and we have a really wonderful new educator to our community, Olivia Gallagher, who is going to be teaching those that course, and Eric Vincent's teaching the Learn to Jam course. So that's our our an effort I asked Amy Collins undertake to just kind of broaden the appeal for the fine and performing arts, so that we're capturing the the interest of kids who are are not necessarily kind of coming to us already with a a skill in the fine and performing arts and the performance side. So we're we're seeing enrollments in those come in, so we're excited about those. So those are the 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 program of studies changes. Again, they're 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 small tweaks, but there, I think each one of those courses offers something that we don't already have.
All right, thank you, Sean. It sounds like exciting stuff. That moves moves us on to subcommittee assignments. In the packet, you'll see the assignments as they are now. So I guess the the idea is look it over. If there's any subcommittees you'd like to be on, just shoot me an email, and we'll try to make that happen.
And through the chair, we do need a vote on the student handbook, so.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I guess I need a motion to accept the student handbook for the 2021, 22 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Joan.
Second.
Second by Paul Bucka. Roll call vote then, Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris Cavino.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Still not seeing Kathy Key, so Dan Kalenda.
Yes.
Sean. O'Shea.
Yes.
That is a yes. Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that is unanimous. All right, so subcommittee assignments. Karen, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on Paul that if if we don't want to make any changes, we're still going to be on those subcommittees unless you hear from us.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is to ratify the agreement between the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee and the Algonquin Regional High School Custodians. For this, we need a vote, and I have some language for the motion. I would like to entertain a motion to vote to approve a two-year collective bargaining agreement with the Regional Custodians Association with a 2% increase for fiscal year '22 and a 2% increase for fiscal year '23, with a $10 increase to the three travel stipends, an increase to the longevity schedule, and six-day buyback of five days after 136 days have been accumulated. This agreement puts the Custodians Association on cycle with the other regional associations.
So moved.
Moved by Joan. Second by Karen Ayers. Any discussion or comment?
I have one if I could, Paul. I'm sorry. I I seem to have dropped out of Zoom for some reason, but I can still hear you. I'm I'm just looking back at the the subcommittee assignments, and there's a few of us that are on something called the Collective Bargaining Committee. And it's kind of a, at least, at least one guy's a point of view. We 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 just negotiated a contract. We're talking about a contract that was negotiated with one of our unions. As a member of the collective bargaining group, I was a little disappointed that I wasn't part of the activities around that, that contract negotiation. You know, we go out of our way to volunteer for these things. You know, I I kind of would appreciate, you know, being being included when those things happen.
Okay, fair point. Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just I I fully support the the agreement and just wanted to, you know, put my give my thanks to our custodians who have done incredible work over their, not over the last number of years, but especially this last year, which has been challenging for everyone. It's been challenging for them to ensure that the facilities in which our students live and operate and our and our teachers, our staff is clean, is ready for them every single morning. And, you know, we're 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 fortunate to have such a great group of dedicated professionals to ensure that our facility is well taken care of. So I I fully support the agreement and and extend my thanks to them.
Well said, Dan. I couldn't agree more. Uh, with that, I believe we're ready for a vote. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Chris Cavino.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Uh, Dan.
Yes.
Sean O'Shea.
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that again passes unanimously. And that brings us to the superintendent's reports to committee.
And the first item is Mr. Bevan's principal's report.
Thank you, Greg. If you can give me screen sharing permissions, I can begin. It looks like I may have that, Greg. I'm going to try, okay? Can you see my screen, everyone? Great.
Yes.
So sorry for the delay there. So thank you, everyone. We are coming into, we're almost to June here, and I'm excited to share updates on a few different fronts. So I I'd like to start out with some really good good news, and those of you who follow me, follow me on, follow Algonquin on social media, on Twitter and Instagram, you'll notice this week we had something really remarkable happen, and it was that one of our students, a sophomore named Ellie Westfall, was the first girl to play for Algonquin baseball that we have any record of. So as you might imagine, we don't have really incredibly strong records for this kind of thing. But in recent memory, and I'm relying on Mike Moserino, who went to school here in the 90s. So I think we have from the certainly around his time up until this time covered, and that we had this young woman who was our starting pitcher on our Monday game against Neshoba High School. She pitched three innings. And here, I actually have a little bit of a video that I was, I just happened to have the dumb luck of attending this game just to see how this, the day was going. this, uh, the day was going. And here, here we have Ellie. And so that was a kind of a really remarkable moment for us and we were excited to see it. I posted on social media and it by, um, leaps and bounds, overperformed all of our other social media posts. So, uh, additionally, my understanding about Ellie, and I don't know this young woman, is that she, um, is an outstanding student and a really wonderful musician. Sounds like she can really do it all. I think that game might be covered on some, uh, one or more of the local, uh, media outlets, um, in our, in the news. So you may see that again. Sorry. Okay. Again, also another piece that, uh, that has already been in the news and will be in the news again is that, uh, our, uh, our social studies department head, Brittany Burns, who you met, uh, I think two months ago in our meeting and you've met her before. And she's really another, uh, really wonderful asset to our community. She, um, was featured in, uh, GBH for a course she teaches, uh, on the Holocaust and that was tied into some larger kind of, uh, regional, in, in, interest in, in the Holocaust and Holocaust education. That story got picked up by CBS and they came out to also interview her and that will be on CBS tomorrow. So that course is a really wonderful one and it, uh, examines, uh, just as it says here on the slide, examine central issues of human rights, uh, civic responsibility and social justice through an analysis of the Holocaust and other modern genocides. It's a really deep diving course that, uh, requires students to think critically about these issues. So, I'm really proud of Brittany and I'm really proud of Ellie. We, we've had a really good week for, for wonderful things happening in our, in our buildings. Um, and then just a teaching and learning update, uh, it's, it's hard to just capture where we are exactly, uh, in, in just a few, few bullet points. I'm just going to try to strike a theme where as we're, uh, in the final month of school, we're finishing strong, teachers are, 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 are kind of opening up their classrooms a little bit. They're able to do a little bit more here on the left-hand side in that photograph. You can see a fetal pig, um, the students are cutting into. That's, uh, the kind of work that I think in September, we did, we weren't sure we'd ever get to. And here we're having that and the students, well, I would say all the students enjoyed it, but cutting into a fetal pig, I'm not sure every, I'm not sure every kid was, uh, excited about that experience, but certainly it's the kind of hands-on learning that we know, um, kids benefit from more than the kinds of learning that they, we really had to rely on, um, in great, um, great amounts this year. Uh, additionally, we're, we're having MCAS, will, will happen after, after June and we're also see, supporting our seniors through to the finish every year. Seeing the seniors, uh, making sure that we're getting the seniors to support they need to graduate on time is a big push for us in the closing weeks of school. So as we're finishing strong, we're also planning ahead. So we are looking to do all the things that we do here in May and June, but we're just doing it as we're coming out of the pandemic. So that means completing hiring and developing our school improvement plan, but it also means developing a bell schedule that will allow us to meet the, what are current COVID guidelines, but also one that is easily transferable, um, as we come out of COVID, uh, social distancing, uh, demands, especially for lunch, which would create a real, um, if you have a student in the school and many of you do, um, you know that our lunch, social distancing demands really drive what our schedule looks like on a given day. So we have a bell schedule that we're, we, we have worked up and we are now looking to develop a, a transfer, a new bell schedule that we, is easily transferable. So that's kind of the themes where we're heading, um, finishing strong and planning ahead. And then I, I, I know we cut, we covered this earlier, but I, I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what, uh, what graduation guidelines look like currently, um, and how they've evolved. And I don't need to spend too much time on this because the real thing that matters most is what they look like on June 6th, which is when we have our graduation. So on March 22nd, this, um, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released guidelines for commencements. They were nearly identical, or if they were any different, I couldn't see any difference between how the guidelines looked last summer. They were highly restrictive, requiring six feet between graduates, six feet between guests. Masks required for all attendees and there were many other restrictions I couldn't list here. It's a document that's about four pages, single-spaced, and so there's much more than I can even talk to you about, um, that would be relevant. On April 28th, they, uh, issued, uh, some changes that reflected, uh, the, the state and the, the global, uh, move toward reopening, um, and that allowed us to have three feet between graduates, which I think anybody can see there, that would make it a nicer ceremony where graduates were closer. But that also gave us is more space, um, for guests to be closer to the, the stage, which was a, a big area of concern for us. But what that did not do is allow for, um, for any less than six feet between households who had to be grouped together. And if you're a parent of a senior, you've seen my communications, the footprint we've had to have, to establish to get 400 families at six feet of distance from pods is quite extensive. But it appears, and this is new information that is not finalized, but it was from, uh, Commissioner Riley today. He shared a slide that I took a picture on my computer on, but we've not seen anything more formal than that. But it said the following, attendees and staff are not required to wear masks and are encouraged to distance from individuals not in their household as feasible. Attendees are encouraged to wear face coverings if they are not vaccinated. So I, I don't know exactly how to read into that data, into that, those, those pieces of information there. I don't know if attendees include, um, you know, who that includes entirely. I don't know if that means households are, are, were just doing much, much less enforcement. I think that that is very likely. And I think the outcome will be that students', um, families will be able to be closer to each other, closer to the stage and be able to have greater visibility at this really important event. So this is, I would say, an exciting development and I think it'll become more real when the details come out. Um, Commissioner Riley indicated that we should be receiving real guidance on this soon. And, um, I'm looking forward to it. So we have currently, uh, as restrictive a plan as we needed to have, that would, would have met the needs on April 28th. And it's a heck of a lot easier to reduce those restrictions and open things up than to go in the other direction. So we're very excited for our kids and families, to have an event that they're going to enjoy. Where even small things like we're able now, and it sounds like a small thing, but we're able now to hand graduates their diplomas. As of yesterday, we were not able to do that. Graduates would have had to come across the stage and get their diploma off a table. So, um, we really do want to make this a memorable experience and memorable for the right reasons. Um, and then there are reduced cleaning requirements that I won't, I won't, um, I don't think we need to go too deeply into, but again, signals, the state's commitment to reopening and, um, it's going to be exciting. Part of my job, maybe the, the most important part of my job in this whole thing is to communicate with families, make sure they understand what our expectations are. Uh, make sure that, um, especially when we were looking at a really major, large footprint, that they were aware that this would be the experience that they could expect. And so I'm communicating weekly with families and I'm doing webinars to, uh, just with no agenda, just opening them up to hear from families and answer their questions. So I'm going to endeavor to do that. I, I endeavor to do that, uh, right up and through to graduation and then see off our seniors into what I think will be a really extraordinary summer for kids who deserve it. In between now and graduation, however, we have senior night, which is, uh, on May 27th, which is a week from tomorrow. This is months and months in, in, in preparation and planning. That day is the seniors' last day. We're planning, um, a nighttime event that really begins around dinnertime, around 6:30 or 6:45 with a teacher parade. I can't remember the exact time of the teacher parade, so I think it's 7:30, but we were having teachers arrive. Um, I think it's 6:30 or 6:45. And my understanding, having not been here, but what I've heard is that when we did this last year, it was a really a remarkable and exciting and memorable part of last year's seniors', uh, graduation experience, which was really impacted immediately and in a way that was hard to adjust to in last year during the, the pandemic. So we're recreating that for this year's seniors and we're asking our, uh, our K through 12 educators to come out and cheer them on for that. We're going to have in food trucks, uh, lawn games, improv. We're going to have an awards and, um, staff, a, a board ceremony, a brief award ceremony and we have a, a staff that's going to be in address and, and then, uh, give an address. And then the students will watch a movie that they chose, um, it through a, a student poll. So we're really excited about that. Our, uh, student leaders have done a really wonderful job of sharing information, getting information from their, their constituent student peers and, and shaping this event into something that we, uh, are excited to pull off. And I think that covers, uh, that's a bit of the state of the union here at the high school. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I will stop sharing.
Looks like Dan Kalenda has a question. Go ahead and answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean, another great, uh, update. I really do appreciate it. I love the graphics as well. I love the video of Ellie. If memory serves, I, 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 I recall her father from Little League and so it's great to see her yeah, yeah, as a student athlete at the high school pitching. That was a, that was one, thank you for sharing that. I'm sure that was a wonderful moment for her, her family, her friends and, and for the school. So, uh, that was great. And then it, you, can you remind me, I, I know you, you talked about, uh, how graduation and at least right now, how it's going to look and that may change. Is it still going to be, did I, did I see correctly that, you know, it's going to be the yardstick rule? It's, is it going to be three feet apart? And, and I'm, I'm only inquisitive because I know, Governor Baker said that, you know, uh, the, anyone who's been to Fenway Park or to a Bruins, uh, game, you're, you're right next to, those seats don't move. And they're at 100% capacity starting May 29th. Is, is, are we doing something different as a school?
I can only tell you what I heard today, uh, Mr. Kalenda, at the, uh, Mr. Riley's webinar and this language he used, which was, attendees and staff are not required to wear masks and are encouraged to distance from individuals not in their household as feasible. I can only say that's the language we've received so far, which is one sentence. Um, and to me signals a, a bit of a shift away from the really, um, more, uh, prescriptive six-foot distancing between household groups. It just seems to me and that was what he was signaling in that meeting. So I can't say with great certainty, but that seems to be um, a reasonable expectation once the, the guidelines are released, which should be soon.
Okay. Do you expect some clarification then for our graduating seniors and their families?
That's, uh, that's what, uh, Mr. Riley indicated in today's, uh, in today's webinar. He did tell us when that would be coming, but I think he's probably well aware that graduations are probably beginning this Sunday and continuing for the next two or three Sundays along. So I can't wait to see it and I fully expect that it'll be more, uh, it will be certainly less restrictive and everything that's less restrictive will be more enjoyable.
Thank you, Mr. Bevan.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't see any other comments, so thank you, Sean. Appreciate that report.
You're welcome.
As usual. And the next item is enrollment.
Yes, so in your packet is the enrollment report for May 12th, uh, 2021 and, um, we saw a one student decrease, uh, since March 2021 report, but for the most part enrollment has remained steady throughout the year. And if the, there are no questions about enrollment, um, I will turn it over to Becky Palgrino to, um, review the monthly general fund expenditure report, um, talk about the COVID-19 financial impact and then, um, plans for closing out, uh, FY '21 academic, uh, financial year.
Well, thank you, Greg. Um, so more pieces of the FY '21 budget continue to fall into place. We now have less than two months remaining in the fiscal year. Um, and as of April 30th, 2021, we had $486,986 dollars, um, remaining on the bottom line or 2.02%. Um, we are running very close to where we were last year at this time, um, where we had $501,671 or 2.01% remaining on the bottom line. There are no areas of note or concern in this month's report. Um, and at next month's meeting, um, I do plan to provide an update, um, or rather a plan, for how we wish to allocate the remaining funds to, um, E and D, OPAB, and then also to the Transportation Reserve Fund that we had established. Um, we are anticipating being able to make contributions to all three of those areas. Are there any questions on the monthly general fund report?
Paul Bucka?
I would move that we accept them, the monthly general fund expenditure report as presented until it's audited.
Second.
Okay, moved by Paul, seconded by Joan, was that?
Yes.
Any further comments? Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It passes unanimously. Uh, I believe that brings us to COVID-19 financial impact or statement of revenue.
I will do the COVID-19 financial impact, Paul.
Okay, all right.
Okay, um, so the grant funds that were presented, um, in the report that was sent to the committee really have not changed at all. However, I am pleased to report that we will see a change in next month, where we did receive some additional funding from the state for the student and staff, screening protocols or program that we have been operating this year. Um, we did receive $123,236 that can be applied towards the screening program. Um, so that was some, uh, great news that we recently received. Um, we have just about expended on the CVRA school reopening grant in the state coronavirus prevention fund and in the June report, I will provide you with a breakdown as to where those funds were expended. And we have also, um, expended the, the big $2,357 for the remote learning technology essential grant. And the majority of that did go to Chromebooks and to hotspots. Um, the SR monies will be used in future years and we are still, um, awaiting a final amount for the SR3 funds, um, which did come in through the, um, the recently enacted stimulus package in March. Our expenses are running very close to where we projected them to be. Um, we had annual projections of just over $1 million and as you can see right now, we have, um, expended about $765,000. Um, so we are really running close to where we thought we were going to be at this time of year. And I will say that the grant funds that we did receive from the state and from the federal government were very instrumental in the operations of, of our buildings this year and were very helpful, um, with all of these unexpected costs that we had. And then finally, the food service program. As of April 30th, um, they had served just over 39,000 lunches and just under 15,000 breakfasts. Um, yeah, as you can see, we are still continuing to project, um, a year-to-date loss and as of the end of April, we were at just under $55,000. Um, we do intend to, at this point in time, use the revolving fund, um, that where there was money at the beginning of the year to cover that loss. Um, we are continuing to monitor that and I'm pleased to say that we have seen with, um, the students returning five days per week and uptick in the number of meals that are being served. So I think May is really going to be, um, a critical month for us to see where we ultimately end up, um, with our food service program. And that concludes my report for COVID-19. Are there any questions?
I am not seeing any questions. Well, thank you, Becky. So Greg, I believe that brings us to the fiscal '21 statement of revenue.
I'll turn it back over to Becky.
I'll just keep going. Okay, um, so the month of April is actually, um, fairly quiet in terms of revenue receipts. Um, we did receive our monthly chapter 70 allocation as well as Medicaid reimbursement for eligible services that were provided to students and schools. Um, as you can see, we received athletic receipts for our spring sports as well as, um, small amounts for student activity and parking fees. As I mentioned last month, our third quarter circuit breaker funds were delayed after a successful audit revealed that we would receive an additional $1,504. Um, so it's always nice to see it come in positively and not negatively. And then this, this week, we were actually, um, the recipients of more good news, um, when we were informed that our district qualified for extraordinary relief under the circuit breaker program and would receive an additional $265,260, um, in the month of May. Um, I just really want to recognize the great work that was done by Sandy Burgess and Student Support Services. I just really want to recognize the great work that was done by Sandy Burgess and Student Support Services and Caroline Willard in the finance office for their work in preparing and submitting those necessary documents to DSC that made those funds available to us.
Becky, can I just comment on that, too? I think that's it's important to note that those funds received were due to the fact that we expended a lot more than we thought in terms of add-on district programming for our students. So what we had anticipated and budgeted was was far greater was far less than what we expended. And therefore, this was to offset those additional expenditures.
Okay. Right, Paul Bucka has his hand up. Paul?
Thank you, Paul. So yeah, I would I would I would certainly commend everyone involved in in picking up those extra funds. That was that was terrific work on the part of everyone involved. And I would also move that we accept the provided statement of revenue until it is audited.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Joan. We do have a couple more comments before we vote. Dan Kalenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that update. And I was inquisitive if those funds could be utilized to offset activity fees. I I digress. And actually, and I bring that up because I I I think I've been too aggressive in paying my activity fees and I actually got a a check back from the Algonquin for 50 bucks. I think I was I overpaid and I thought, hmm, well, then I thought, well, maybe this is coming from you as activity fees. So anyway, thank you for that. Thank you for the update.
All right, John O'Shea?
Just wondering those the the fees, the money recovered due to the extraordinary expenses. Sometimes it I don't know if that's circuit breaker. So will those those aren't, we won't get that fund now, correct? Will we? We get it next year?
No, we actually, we actually received it yesterday. And it does need to be expended in this fiscal year because it was to offset expenses incurred in this fiscal year. So we are in the process of doing journal entries to move that off the operational budget and onto circuit breaker.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right, I'm not seeing any further hands raised, so I think we're good to vote. Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yeah.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
John O'Shea?
Yes.
And Kathleen Politsko?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it passes unanimously.
Okay, and my last report.
Yes, next to the fact that the PAR's Public Agency Retirement Services, so we were thrilled to get a account report for the period of March. And it showcases our annualized investment return. Becky can speak to that.
Yes, so beginning this month, we're providing the school committee with the the monthly PAR's OPEB trust report. This report is a little bit more delayed. It comes when it when it wants to come to us. So it is as of March 31st. You can see, we started this investment with a with a contribution of $150,000. And after six months, the balance has increased to $169,802. Just so that the committee remembers, this fund is invested in a balanced strategy, which really seeks to provide capital appreciation and it has a low to moderate level of risk. And it is the target allocation is 60% equity and 40% fixed income. So it is very balanced, but it is one of the safer options that was provided to the committee.
Dan Kalenda?
Can you give us an assessment of our current OPEB liabilities outstanding, projected, I know, versus what we have?
Oh, our OPEB liability, I want to say it was about 34 million. And we so this is really just a drop in the bucket towards that, but it is a starting place. We will be, as part of establishing this OPEB trust, we will now have to undergo an annual audit of our OPEB liability. So we will have more recent numbers for you in the fall.
Thank you. And I and I had a feeling that it was that out of whack. So and I think it's important for the communities of Northborough and Southborough and those who serve it and and who are who rely on those those funds to understand that it is a drop in the bucket. And and I hope in in future budgets, we're able to allocate more towards that incredibly high outstanding liability. Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you, Becky.
All right. So on the theme of budgets, the next item in your packet is the FY 22 budget calendar. And the next milestone event is the Southborough Annual Town Meeting, which is this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. on the Neary soccer field. And as committee members know, we had the Northborough had a very successful town meeting. And the Northborough Assessment of the Regional Budget was approved by the citizens of Northborough. So we have, I believe, 36.49% of our budget left to have approved by the Southborough voters. So that is this Saturday. And to conclude, my superintendent's report in your packet is the FY 22 School Committee Approved Budget. And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Greg. And that brings us to old business. And the first item is discussion on superintendent's evaluation process.
So school committee members should have received an email from Cheryl Lepre. I met with Superintendent to Union Number Three Chairs, Katore Martin and Joan Frank. We were outlined the process and I organized all of my supporting evidence. I'd be happy to answer any questions or along the process as you review the information I provided. You have further questions? Please feel free to reach out to me or go through the chair, Paul Desmond.
All right, Joan?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the members that have already submitted their evaluations. This is a very important part. One of the things from Ed Reform 1993 that we do this evaluation of super town along with the budget and policy. And I'd just like to remind everybody that if you can, we would like you to submit them by next Friday, May the 28th, your evaluations. And then Katore Martin and myself will meet with Greg and go over the composite evaluation, share it with him. And then, of course, as you know, on to the agenda at the bottom, we have a combined meeting date of Wednesday, June 16th, where Greg's evaluation will be presented in open session. Thank you, Chairman Desmond.
Thank you, Joan. Dan Kalenda?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And whomever put together this, you know, the the format that we use now, and I've been on this board for, I think, over a decade. The the current format is is outstanding and incredibly easy to navigate, can use and assess our superintendent. The the previous form that we use was almost an impediment to to providing valuable feedback. It was incredibly cumbersome. So anyway, I don't know, Joan, who put that together, the the current format? But it is outstanding and, you know, really is makes it makes it much more easy to really assess how Greg did and and as opposed to what we had to do in the past. So anyway, just wanted to whoever whomever came up with that, well done.
I believe it was Cheryl Lepre and Greg Martineau with his technology expertise that got that new form for us and makes it a lot easier. It goes to the central office staff for putting that together and Greg.
All right, thank you. Totally agree, Dan. Those first couple of years were rough.
I was just gonna I was just going to add, because I was probably responsible for the first couple of years. Know that it was an iterative process, obviously, that, you know, took a long time to to get to perfection. But I think Cheryl Lepre is the most consistent and probably, I mean, Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Cheryl Lepre played the biggest role over the last 10 years of getting it in the state it's in right now. And she deserves huge accolades.
Yeah, I think I don't think we can sing Cheryl Lepre's praises enough. This is just one example of many of of the great work she does. And any superintendent is lucky to to work alongside her.
All right, that brings us to the next item, plans to return to in-person meetings.
Sure. So just an update on Governor Baker's orders, his plan to end the emergency orders beginning June 15th, which means that Paul Desmond will not be able to read the preamble to our agenda anymore. And we'll have to return to in-person meetings. So we are waiting for more information from Attorney General's Office and Open Meeting Law experts to see what that means for meeting virtually on June 16th. My anticipation is that it would be an in-person meeting. But as we get more information, I will will follow up with Paul Desmond and make sure people know whether it's in person or or virtual. And that was just a general note, but I think moving forward, looking forward to next year, you know, I think it's the will of the committee in terms of what types of meetings it would like to hold.
Maybe we could get a sense for that now. I mean, just a thumbs up if you're comfortable with in-person meetings. Okay, very good.
Paul? Hold on, Paul.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. My Wi-Fi is unstable, so that's why I'm trying to stay off screen. But in terms of June 16th, I am totally in favor of returning to in-person. I have no problem with it at all. But in terms of June 16th, there may be those of us who, assuming that it's remote, have made plans to not necessarily be around the Northborough-Southborough area. So for June 16th, it might be nice to at least start off with a hybrid so that those of us who can attend the meeting but can only attend virtually can still attend. That's all.
Okay.
And we we do have a a remote meeting policy. So the only thing we would need a physical quorum if, again, the emergency order is lifted on June 15th, which I think we could have commented.
If I remember right, that's how we started this.
Yes.
All right, next item, policy development and or distribution, none at this time. Which brings us to audience sharing. And we do have one audience member who patiently had his hand raised for quite some time, Michael Siaka. I should remind you that this audience sharing is is a chance for audience members to just give their opinions on on any given school-related topic. But we're not going to get into a back and forth dialogue. So Michael, I think you're good to go if you just want to unmute yourself. And state your name and address, please. Michael, you're still muted. Michael, can you unmute yourself, please? Okay, not sure what to do here.
So I will, he does have ability.
Okay, all right. Hello, can you hear me?
There you go, yep.
Okay, sorry about that. I was trying the keystroke and it wasn't working. So all right, thanks so much. Yes, so thank you for the floor. I appreciate it. As was stated, my name is Michael Shaka. I'm a Northborough resident, taxpayer voter, and having children who've graduated from Algonquin as Tomahawks, currently attending Algonquin and soon to attend. I wish to
State your address real quick, please?
Sure, 120 Maynard Street.
Thank you.
Okay, I wish to speak in support of the comments made by Mr. Kalenda concerning the importance of a community survey. I would also like to challenge the comments that the public had sufficient notice concerning the process of the mascot vote or that the process was adequately advertised. I, like many others who have who I've spoken with, have been really desensitized by all of the overwhelming correspondence that has been coming nearly daily about COVID reports. Every time a person tests positive, we get these these emails. It's 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 very much overwhelming and, you know, things get lost in the shuffle. And I feel truly believe that the public had not had sufficient opportunity to to really comment on, you know, the vote that was made. I therefore object to the process. It's my opinion that there's been a refusal to acknowledge legitimate constituent concerns or objective conversation. I was frustrated and frankly disgusted that nobody would even provide the courtesy of a second to the motion that Mr. Kalenda offered the day of the vote. Just out of common courtesy, I request that and feel that the public is owed that all of the data is made available and publicly shared. You know, just as Raytheon, Massachusetts-based Raytheon, out of reverence, chose the name of our country's primary missile system, the Tomahawk. Or just as we use Blackhawk and Apache when naming our most elite military force aircraft. My suspicion is that if given adequate and well-advertised format, the results would greatly differ from the decisions of this board. It's shameful to think that there is no better way to spend nearly a half a million dollars of the taxpayers' money when we have challenges with the level of education that students have received during this pandemic. That money could certainly serve the community better by providing some additional education resources. We could be providing more to our athletics, like, you know, new fields, new whatever, books, I mean, anything. To think that this board is so preoccupied with the name of a of a tool or a weapon in which has of no detriment to the Native American population that I can think of. I think that this really needs to come to a community vote and not not this board. So that that that's was my points.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen Politsko, do you have something to share?
Nope, can you hear me?
Okay.
Nope, I I just touched the wrong button.
All right, no problem. I believe that's it then for audience sharing. Move on to personnel, the distribution of the personnel report.
So in your packet is the personnel report. And we do intend to invite our retirees, retiring educators to the June 16th meeting. So that we can recognize them properly. And we have several members of our Algonquin teaching staff who will be retiring at the end of this year. And there's no better way to say thank you than inviting them to a school committee and acknowledging their hard work.
It probably is, but I'll let that go. Communications. Any communications, Greg?
Just one communication that that is tomorrow evening. The NSPAC is holding its Go the Distance Award Ceremony. And it is virtual, so I will have I will share that link out to the school committee members tomorrow morning. And if you have a chance to attend, it's always a great event.
Great, thank you. Otherwise, we've got approval of bills and payrolls, which we handle online these days. Agenda items for next month. We've got the recognition of retirees that Greg just mentioned, information technology, network security, Applied Arts Department presentation and joint policy development plans summary sheet. Any other requests for agenda items?
Just one comment that the Applied Arts Presentation did take place earlier in the school year, so we will remove that from the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, Greg, that was the fine and performing arts that we had presented. So I will check who is on target for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do you have something? Sean O'Shea?
Just that presentation on technology security, is that on like student security or on the security of our own network? You know, there's a lot of ransomware stuff happening, even with school districts. I didn't know which, will that be addressed by any chance?
Yes, and we'll have Yeah, so we'll have, um, Mr. Maurice Myrie join us. And he'll be talking about, um, an overall, um, our network security strategy. So more about the switches and firewalls than, um, anything.
Okay, if, if we could get an update at some time about how secure, I mean, I don't think we can ever be 100% secure. But I know, um, hackers are going after little towns and big towns alike, let alone pipelines. If there's, um, you know, any information that can be shared without giving too much away about our, our vulnerabilities, that would be, I think, interesting for us to know.
Hey, thanks, Sean. Chris Covino?
Thanks, Paul. Actually, um, Greg, is this one, with information, security and technology, would that be one of the reasons we could enter into executive session?
Yes, Chris, that is one of the reasons why. So the, uh, that could fall under the broad category of security.
Depending on the nature of the content of that presentation, um, I think we might want to consider, uh, an executive session for that.
I will speak with, um, Mr. Myrie and get a, a sense of what information he thinks is important for the committee to know. And if, whether sharing that information in a public session would compromise us.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, and I think, as I think we mentioned, our, our John mentioned, our next meeting is, the combined meeting is on June 16th, followed by our, our regular meeting. And with that, I believe I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Kathleen Holland. Uh, roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Budka?
Yes, and the Bruins have just tied it, two to two.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yeah.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
John O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Politsko?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.